Call the regular monthly meeting, the Elsworth City Council, Monday, October 21st, 2019, 7:00 PM. All present except with the exception of Council Phillips and Councilor Hudson. Council Phillips is expected in 15, 20 minutes. Item two on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all stand, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, Rules of Order. We run our meeting by Robert's Rules of Order and any other rules that we put in place at the meeting this past November. Item four, oh, and by the way, if you have any phones or pages, if you put them on silence now, I'd appreciate it. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meeting of the Elsworth City Council, September 13th, 2019, special council meeting, and September 16th, 2019, regular monthly meeting. Motion and a second? All those in favor? Item five, City Manager's Report. Manager Cole, the floor is yours.
I have a few but growing list of items for tonight's meeting.
So I understand.
To share. First, there will be a meeting of the Local Roads Committee tomorrow night in these council chambers at 6:00 PM where priority needs for local roads will be discussed. Across the street, across the parking lot for that matter, tomorrow night at 6:00 PM is the Meet the Candidate Forum being held by the Heart of Elsworth. Also at 6:00 PM, as I understand it, there'll be candidates for both council and school board participating. I also have been made aware tonight that the Down East Cider and Cheese Event is scheduled for November 9th, also at the J&amp;B Atlantic Facility. There'll be seatings at 4:30 and 6:30, and if you'd like more information, please refer to the Heart of Elsworth Facebook page or website. Also, our staff, our very capable staff, are putting together this year's silent auction for the city to benefit our discretionary fuel fund, which helps out people in need of help, and bidding is to take place at City Hall for a period from November 1st through November 30th. Several local businesses and individuals are donating some great stuff for the auction, so stop by and participate. Also, the Elsworth Area Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring the Down East Business Conference on Thursday, November 7th, from 8:00 AM to 4:15 PM. A number of groups, local groups, are co-sponsoring and supporting this event. There's some great programs here, from small business oriented to workplace issues, raising capital, health insurance, all the key issues facing businesses in this day and age. So if you'd like more information, go to the Elsworth Area Chamber of Commerce website. And, oh, yes.
Most important.
Trunk or Treat, which is on Thursday, October 31st, because that would be Halloween. From 3:00 to 5:00 is Trick or Treat Downtown with participating businesses, and kids have been known to stop by City Hall as well. And at 5:00 is the Parade and the Trunk or Treat, which takes place in the parking lot here at City Hall with a number of groups participating in that event. It's a fun time, and I know I enjoy it, and welcome folks to come and enjoy our city. So those are the events, and that's all I have.
You're a regular town crier tonight.
I know. It's a good thing I didn't get any more events because I'm tacked up.
Thank you very much. Item six, Committee Reports. If there's any counselors that have had any committee meetings in the last month that have any report on them, this is your time now to let us know.
I attended the Recreation Commission on October 2nd, and started with the Down East Family YMCA Youth Sports Report. Travel Soccer had six teams, and the Fall Rec Soccer had 123 players from Elsworth, which is really good turnout. Travel Basketball's starting up, as well as Rec Basketball. Travel Basketball Tryouts, I believe, are this week, and Rec starts on November 9th. So the ice rink they talked about, looking at starting installing that on November 1st. And just a report that the workouts that they did in the park over the summer went really well. There's a lot of participation in that, so they hope to do that again next year. And there was talk about the Ice Fishing Derby. I believe that's for February 8th and 9th. We also discussed Winter Carnival in great length. Still trying to nail down dates and a backup date and what events we want to have for that. And that's about it.
Thank you very much. And Council Fortier?
This is an internal working committee, but I think it's time we let the public know that Councilor Grindel and I have been meeting with staff and the city manager, working with a consultant to bring a governmental solar system, up to five acres, to prop in Elsworth to benefit hopefully the city and the taxpayers and reduce electrical costs. We are in the middle of developing a request for qualifications, an RFQ, to send that out to interested parties and businesses that want to partner with us. We're working with a consultant that has worked with us before on natural gas issues. So just to let you know, there's a lot of talk out there about Elsworth isn't doing anything solar. Well, we are. We're just trying to do it in a thoughtful timeframe so that we don't make some mistakes that other communities have. So it's out there now. This is what we're working on. We have an opportunity to save a good amount of money on our electricity rate. Belfast just built a $7.7 million Public Works Garage, and next to it they put, I believe it was a five acre, right around there, solar array, and that is covering 90% of the city of Belfast's electrical costs on a purchase power agreement. So we are working on it, just we're doing it in a slower manner than some people.
Thank you. Council Hamilton?
So Council Grindel and I are participating in a committee looking at HCTC in terms of the physical building for the purpose of addressing both workforce issues and student needs in terms of education. That group is made up of two members from EMDC, two members from this council, two members from the school board, and a community representative. And so the first step is to issue a request for qualifications, asking a firm to present their background, et cetera, to look at both the existing building in terms of if that building were to be rebuilt, or looking at building a new facility to address the current needs as well as the future needs of workforce and educational programming for CTE types of resources. So it's just underway, it's just started, but that process will be moving forward, and it's really just to start that process of looking at what those options and the best options would be for that type of facility. What's unique about this is, at this point, it is a really a public-private partnership with the goal of looking at moving that project forward would be a partnership from private and public to make that happen so that we can provide the right type of programs in this community for both our high school students as well as workforce beyond that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item seven, Citizens' Comments. This time is set aside. If anyone would like to advise us of anything, let us know of anything, we ask that you would come to the podium if you would like, state your name, and tell us what's on your mind, please. No takers. Item eight, Presentation of Awards. I have a couple this evening.
Before you move on from that, I'd like to say something.
You want to go back to?
Yeah.
Citizen's comments?
Yeah.
Let's do that.
No?
Wait a little, John, you'll have your chance.
Carry on.
Overruled. Follow that one. Item eight, Presentation of Awards. First one this evening is Bernie Hesse. Mr. Hesse, if you would be so kind as to come to the front, please.
Yeah, I need another minute.
This is rare in this day and age. City of Elsworth proudly presents this certificate of service to Bernie Hesse in recognition of your 35 years of service in various capacities, from equipment operator to highway foreman for the Elsworth Public Works Department. Your devotion and duty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Elsworth. Presented this 21st day of October, 2019. Signed, David A. Cole.
Still in diapers from Bernie's study.
Adam, the city of Elsworth proudly presents this certificate of service to you in recognition of your 15 years of service in your various positions as truck driver, equipment operator, and harbor master for the city of Elsworth Public Works Department. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Elsworth. Presented this 21st day of October, 2019. Can I have an edited one? That should say 20 years of service. But thank you.
We'll give you back your five years.
First five didn't count.
I can fix that.
Adam, just beware, I read them, I don't print them. And there's one more tonight, not on the agenda.
Move, adjourn. Yeah, let my wife in.
Yep.
You guys are so good at secrets.
No, we have to wait a minute here. I know there's others coming in.
Yeah.
And apparently you do also.
Do you want to check him for firearms?
No. Oh my God, they brought the Tesla. Inspector Haney, what's the load in this room?
It's about to be tested.
Come up front if you would, please.
Boy, I'm glad my wife told me we're not a tie. You know, next month I'll be able to come to this meeting without a tie and without paying the $20.
We'll still give you three minutes.
Gary Forte's contributions to the city of Elsworth are almost too many to list, and certainly too many to put on a small 8x11 plaque, but it would be remiss of us not to mention as many of them as possible. Over the course of his 40-plus years of public service, Gary has generously given of his time and has served in all the following committees, commissions, and boards. Take a deep breath.
No, you need to breathe, I know.
Streetlight Committee, Watershed Committee, Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, Recreation Committee, High School Building Committee, Finance Committee, City Hall Renovation Committee, Cable Committee, Elsworth Elementary-Middle School Committee, Sester Centennial Committee, EMS Committee, Elsworth Chamber of Commerce Board, Main Municipal Executive Committee, Main Municipal Strategic and Finance Committee, Main Municipal Association Property and Casualty Pool Board of Directors, Main Municipal Association Nomination Committee, Main Municipal Association Workers Compensation Board of Trustees, and Main Municipal Legislative Policy Committee. Gary was also a volunteer member of the Elsworth Fire Department for 35 years. He was also the recipient of the Elsworth Area Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year Award in 2008, and the Elsworth Rotary Club Paul Harris Fellow Honor as a non-rotarian in 2006. When Gary was not working as a self-employed electrician or at a committee meeting, he could be found doing things like hanging in sound curtains at the basketball courts, snowblowing or shoveling the snow off the Nolton Park Ice Rink very early in the morning, wiring lights and powering up the tent for the rotary pancake breakfast, lowering the flag at SK Whiting Park to half mast on solemn occasions, adjusting the time on the towel clock at SK Whiting Park when it ran slow, taking the morning paper to elderly residents, taking care of power issues at the Harbor Park gazebo for the Friday Night Concert Series, working on projects for the Elsworth Garden Club, the Woodlawn Museum, Red Cross Disaster Operations, Autumn Gold Celebration, and Winter Carnival Events, donating electrical work at the local ball fields, cooking hot dogs and hamburgers at the city summer cookout so employees could enjoy themselves, repairing lighting for the downtown holiday light display, fundraising for worthy causes, and much, much more. Gary Fortier exemplifies the spirit of public service, and on behalf of a grateful city, I'd like to say thank you for your dedication and service to the Elsworth community. Your volunteerism has contributed greatly to the improvement of the city of Elsworth.
Woohoo! Yahoo! Yeah, you gotta hold that, you hold that plaque, there you go. Yeah, no, don't leave yet, we got a couple, couple more things here. There we go, thank you.
I'm here so that the people in the viewing audience can hear me. This is very humbling. 49 years and five months ago, when I followed in my older brother Ronnie's, my father's, my grandfather's, my great-grandfather's, my uncle's venture into the fire service, it was for the right reason. It was to betterment of the community. And after 35 years of doing that, actually about 28 because I was on council during that time too, I upped my game and went on city council. As you've just heard, you know why I'm broke. I never worked. But I want to tell you, Elsworth has been blessed in the last 49 years with outstanding employees, citizens that support us in doing what is right. There is some complaining of taxes, and I understand that, but there are certain things that this city council needs to put as a priority, not just taxes. You heard that I've been very involved with Main Municipal Association over the last eight, 10 years. That was the hardest thing of giving up my position on the city council, as I had to give that up. I was in line the last year to be president of Main Municipal this year, but I knew I was going to get done, and I didn't want to put them through a one-term president. So I stepped aside for some excellent people. It's probably one of the most professional funds groups that I've been involved with in the last 25 years. They are also there for the right reason. When 484 of the municipal governments out of 487 in the state of Maine have paid dues members to that organization, it says quite a bit of the quality of the leadership and the executive committee. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I don't know what I'm going to be doing, but I'm certainly not leaving Elsworth. She's got a honeymoon list. So thank you. And what gave it away was they got a paper name tag.
We're supposed to notice.
He was looking for it.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
A year for you.
I would, I'd like to read something that I plan to submit to the Elsworth American on Monday.
Again, haven't I been in there enough this month?
Well, it's different. This one's going to be a positive one.
Talking the jail court news.
This is Gary Fortier and his retirement from the city council. I'm going to read this because I don't want to screw it up. As most of you who follow what is going on in this city know, this is Council Fortier's last meeting. I've known Gary since we were both a great deal younger, but I've really gotten to know him since serving together on the council for the last 16 years. I know of no other person who loves this city more than Gary, and he has served with great passion, not just as a counselor, but in ways beyond the scope of his elected responsibility. As previously stated, he is a member of one of the first families of our fire department that included grandfathers, father, his brothers. They've all served long active stints with the Elsworth Fire Department. It's an organization that is near and dear to him and of which he has been a champion. He has given thousands of hours of his personal time to benefit the city, using his superior knowledge as an electrician to keep the power on for a myriad of events, including those events behind his house at Woodlawn. He's had been an advisor on street lighting needs. He has given his time with the recreation department to make sure the basketball court's up and ready and then put to bed in the fall. He's been instrumental in getting skating rinks set up, yet there is so much that he has done without asking for any thanks or money. More importantly for the citizenry of Elsworth, this is, this man is a compendium of knowledge on how this city functions. Over the years, I have watched him give sound advice on issues, on what needs to be done, what shouldn't be done, and more importantly, why. He has also put Elsworth on the map with his service for the Main Municipal Association, through the many meetings that he has attended, particularly in Augusta, but elsewhere. He's been an important, active member of many committees. He has a broad understanding of so many issues that we face on a daily basis, and I think we'll all agree that he offers opinions earnestly without mincing any words. Gary's also been one of the first to volunteer to either head a committee or serve on one, and he knows and cares about so many people. He checks in with people around town, he asks, is there anything you need, you need any help? So does this city lose something after today? You bet we do. But don't be surprised if Gary Fortier continues to be ready to give a hand or lend his skill when the need arises, because he loves this city. He cares.
Ian here.
I've got an idea that Kenny is giving me flowers.
You got it.
I bring up the person that has supported me for 43 years. My daughter's in San Francisco, or she'd be here, the rest of my family. We're all elder people except for some of the spouses. But she has put up with a lot, and she informed me this afternoon that she is going to miss my council meeting nights because those nights she could sneak nachos. So I believe these are for you, who used to be the first lady of Elsworth. Thank you. And my brothers and sisters.
Before you guys leave, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to shake the hand on the way out. One of the reasons that I've stayed so long is the family that we have in the fire service.
I just want to say one thing to you. Came across this quote a few months ago. No, 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 no. And we've heard, it's funny because several times tonight we've heard the word volunteer, volunteering, volunteerism, so on and so forth. The quote begins, "Volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy. You vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community you want to live in." That speaks of you.
Thank you. One of my proudest things I have, it's obvious someone has been in my office at home to get all this information. I have a knee wall with all my plaques and certificates, and one of the framed items that I treasure the most is a personally penned note from Stephen Fay at the Elsworth American thanking me for my service as mayor and chairman when I was doing that. To get that from a publisher of a paper to a public official, I framed it, it's there. So thank you. Dismissed.
Thank you.
Brad, Brad.
First or second?
Dick, he's got his law.
Mr. Phillips? Don't give us that you were on a plane.
At 3:00 I was in Sanford, Florida, I did pretty well.
Our newest members of the family, our brothers and sisters at EMS.
Good night.
Does this mean I get the Tesla this weekend? Thank you all, very humbling.
Council Hamilton? Gary, I just want to say one more thing. You won't remember this, but the reason I want to say this is because your service and your volunteer work really is a reflection of you, who you are as a person. And when I first moved into Elsworth, I lived at the bottom of Westwood Hills on your street, and you don't know, but you probably saved my marriage because I had my wife helping with this big my wife helping with this big couch that we were trying to get through the door, and it wasn't going well. And all of a sudden, this van pulls in, and it's Gary jumps out, and he immediately jumps in, takes my wife's place, helps us move it in, and just welcomed us to the neighborhood, welcomed us to the city. And that stuck with me, that stuck with my wife, and that just really reflects who you are. So I think that's the most important thing that I take away. I've appreciated the last two years, getting to know you a little bit, and certainly agreeing and disagreeing with you.
You made it.
And you did. He says he was on a plane, but we don't. But so, thank you, Gary.
Thank you very much, all.
I couldn't miss you last night.
I can. Well, like John, it might be just a pause in the membership.
Moving on.
Yes, please.
Under unfinished business, item nine, council order number zero-three-one-nine-one-one, discussion in action on the clam warden position for the Frenchman Bay Shellfish Program, tabled at the March eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen regular council meeting. There has been a request to remove this from the agenda.
So move.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item ten, the consent agenda. All items in the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. First item, council order number one-zero-one-nine-zero-zero, request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector to accept payments on tax-acquired timeshare units per the attached spreadsheet, and to authorize the city manager to release said properties through municipal quick claim deeds. Item eleven, council order number one-oh-one-nine-zero-one, request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector to accept payments on a real estate purchase installment of repack property located at eight-five-zero Mariahville Road, map one-zero-seven, lot zero-two-zero triple-zero, triple-zero, and to authorize the city manager to release said building through a municipal quick claim deed. Item twelve, council order number one-oh-one-nine-zero-two, request of the Recreation Commission to appoint Joshua Fraut to the Recreation Commission with the term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Council order number one-zero-one-nine-zero-three, request of the Recreation Committee to accept a resignation letter from Robert Hessler with a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. And item fourteen, council order number one-zero-one-nine-zero-four, request to appoint Stephen Shay, currently an associate member, to the Appeals Board as a full member to fill the remainder of Jefferson Clark's recently vacated term, which was set to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Are there any counselors that would like to see any of these items pulled out for separate discussion, please? Seeing none, I will request that number twelve be set aside just for a moment for separate discussion, a separate vote on that. On all the others, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move approval with the exception of item twelve.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous. On item twelve, Josh is my nephew, and so I'm going to abstain on that vote. That's the only reason I wanted it separate. All those in favor of item twelve?
We haven't had a motion on it yet.
Go ahead.
Move to approve, item twelve.
Motion and second. All those in favor? All those abstaining? Thank you very much.
Just one comment.
Yes.
Since I was so humbled this evening. Robert Hessler has been on the Recreation Commission since they created Earth. Special thanks to him. He's held every position on there. He's been one of those people that would show up at the ice rink in the morning to help me. He's, he's been an incredible volunteer for the city of Ellsworth. So I just wanted to say that for the record.
Thank you. Under new business, item fifteen, public hearing in action on the applications for the following licenses. First one is Louise Joy and Thomas Joy doing business as Edward Joy and Sons, one-twenty-nine North Street, for renewal of a city junkyard automobile graveyard permit. I'll open the public hearing on this. If there are any comments, now would be your time to let us know, please. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Joys.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Second one is James B. Card II doing business as Jimbo's Junkin', sixty-two Kylie's Way, for renewal of a city junkyard automobile graveyard permit. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of Jimbo's Junkin' for a renewal of a license.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Second one is James B. Card II doing business as Jimbo's Junkin', sixty-two Kylie's Way, for renewal of a city junkyard automobile graveyard permit. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of Jimbo's Junkin' for a renewal of a license.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Item sixteen, council order number one-zero-one-nine-zero-five, request of the wastewater superintendent to upgrade a Bobcat skid steer, purchase a pavement cutting attachment unit, and purchase any other associated equipment as part of the manhole cutting project.
Thank you. My name is Mike Harris, wastewater superintendent. And so what I'm asking is for a piece of equipment that is used with a Bobcat to help us cut and remove manhole rim and covers from streets, wherever they need to be done. The reason I'm asking for it is because it's much more efficient, less intrusive, than using an excavator and a pavement saw to remove these pieces of infrastructure. It also allows the wastewater department to be able to do that without impacting the Public Works Department and having them bring an excavator and an operator for that excavator to wherever we are to remove the manhole rim and covers. And as I said before, you disturb a lot less pavement in the street, and there's a lot less impact to the road using this method as opposed to using the old method of having an excavator come out and using a wet saw to try and cut through the pavement and then rip it up with a excavator. And then the, the attachment does not work with our current Bobcats, a little too small. So there's also a request to upgrade to a little bit bigger skid steer Bobcat so that we can use this attachment. It also helps us, because we receive pallets of chemicals at the treatment plant, and our current skid steer does have forks, but the machine is not big enough to lift the pallets off the trucks. So we typically need to have them bring a liftgate truck to bring the, to get the, to offload the chemicals, and then we use a pallet jack to manually move it to wherever we have to move it to. With a new machine, we eliminate the need for that. The attachment itself has been approved by the state to use remaining monies left in our wastewater treatment plant project that we still haven't expended. And then the other piece, the Bobcat upgrade, the current budget capital improvement has sixty thousand dollars set aside for this project. Thirty-nine thousand of it would be for the Bobcat, and the Bobcat attachment is going to be reimbursed by the SRF, so would actually leave money in that capital improvement project. There may be some ancillary equipment to go with it, but nothing of any scale that's going to cost a serious amount of money.
Counsel. I'd like to see the first project that you wanted to take is to fix that sewer thing in the middle of the intersection between Franklin Street and Main Street.
Yes, sir.
It's about that deep.
Yeah, no, and I mean, as you, anybody that drives through Ellsworth will be able to see, especially on High Street and Main Street, there are manholes that need replacing. Last year, during the wintertime, we had a manhole at the intersection of Main Street and High Street, literally break in half and come out of the hole. Thankfully, nobody drove into it, but we spent probably six hours out there during the snowstorm. And the reason we were out there for so long with the police directing traffic is because all the highway crew was out trying to take care of the roads, because it was snowing quite heavily. And so we finally got the water superintendent, who was able to operate the excavator, to be able to go get the excavator, bring the excavator down. Once we had the excavator, the repair didn't take that long, but because we didn't have the means that, or the personnel to dig it ourselves, it ended up taking a lot longer and was a lot more intrusive. We also had a manhole at the bottom of Davis Street that came out of its rim and cover, too. And so it was just a situation where we need to start addressing these, and we need to be as efficient as possible, because we don't want to be out in traffic any more than we have to. For the safety of my people and for the traffic concerns in the city of Ellsworth, we'd like to be able to try and do these things quickly and efficiently and get out of the way.
Counsel Fortia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd suggest also that later on, we're going to talk about some purchases for infrastructure maintenance. I would put this right in there, at the same conversation as that these rims and everything went uneven, they leaked more, they damaged plow trucks. So with the state kicking in eighteen thousand from the unspent funds, already near capital improvement, it's been through the budgeting process, it's been through the CIP committee as listed as a priority, in full support of this one.
Thank you.
Even though you sat on the right side of the room.
It's a pre-meeting thing.
You had to be.
I'm sorry.
We decided that only money on this side was going to be spent, nothing over there.
Oh, that's a problem.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So I also just want to echo, I think, obviously, when every dollar we spend is and should be scrutinized, not only by the council, but by the community. And so I just wanted to point out, because some of the things that you said, that's obvious in there, and one is, as a city, one of the reasons that we sat here and talked about looking at capital improvement projects in its entirety, not just item by item and having individual needs pop up, is the fact that it is more expensive to replace a piece of equipment when it's an emergency than it is to do it in a thoughtful, planful manner, not to mention all the ancillary costs that go behind that. So when we talk about what you pointed out, the fact that we have to divert limited resources that the city has, we talk about the roads. You hear the roads all the time, and every time we take our crews away from working on the roads to address an issue that could be done differently, there's a cost to it, there's an impact to it. And so to be able to do this project in a way that doesn't impact the budget, in fact, you're coming under what we budgeted, leveraging resources that we don't have to pay for, that's, that's a win all around. And so I certainly support it, because it's, it's in that context of making sure that we do things as efficiently as possible. We will save more as a city when we're efficient in carrying out the functions than we do if we just say, don't buy that, don't buy that, because at some point in time, that is going to break, and that is going to be incredibly expensive. And so if we do it in a planful manner, we can keep taxes at an even keel and hopefully even lower. But if we don't, then we will certainly end up a place where it's going to cost us much more.
Yes, sir. Counsel Phillips.
Mike, how many manholes do we deal with a year, would you guess?
How many should we deal with, or how many do we deal?
Nope, nope. How many are you dealing with?
Not many.
Two, three?
Yeah, maybe five.
It's not. And I did, I took a look at your Mr. Manhole. It's a handy looking thing. Looks like a giant hole saw on a, on a, boom, cuts a nice hole.
Yep.
Looks like it takes about four or five men, by the way, that video goes, to get the job done. So after you get the thing cut out and done, how are you going to get the hot top and the other stuff without the highway department?
The plan is not to use hot top. The plan is to use concrete, have a concrete machine, I think it was like fifteen hundred dollars for one of the small mixers, so that when we cut the hole and set the rim and cover, then we can pour concrete around to fill it back in, put a steel plate over it until it sets up, and then move the plate, and we're done.
That's what it showed, and showed a pretty nifty device, where you actually do a measurement and then cut a spacer to get it to the proper height.
Yep.
So if you do have this, are you planning on going into a program of preemptive strikes and do something?
We already, we've already, so we have a maintenance program at the plant. We've actually now inputted all of the collection system as far as the mains and stuff into it, and then the next step is to put the individual manholes into it, with it being the intent to have a rotating schedule for dealing with like a third of the system each year. And that includes what we'll talk about later in terms of cleaning and jetting, and that also includes identifying manholes, oring the manholes and rims that we need, getting them on site, scheduling the work, and then I think actually, we could probably do that, do a manhole with maybe as low as two people.
Yeah, instead of getting a traffic control, which is going to take?
We do, we do stuff in the street now with two people. Like we have, we've had plugs where I've had two people out there. We park a pickup truck on one end, park a pickup truck on the other end, we jet in the middle.
Okay. So, so you have that, and we're also looking at this discussion later on, that vacuum truck. And you now have X amount of crew. Is the crew busy all the time?
The department is.
Yes, where I'm headed is, how are you going to start with these programs of the crew that you have and still make it work? Now, just kind of, I understand it's a good idea, and it's, and it's a great thought, and we probably should be doing it. But how are you going to address that if you currently have the adequate amount of men, when you start adding extra work?
Well, there's two things. One, the good thing about us owning our own equipment is we can schedule it when we want to schedule it. We don't have to be the slave to somebody else's schedule, which is a big problem. And two, I mean, I would anticipate at some point, as the city grows, our department is going to need another person. Does this drive us to another person? I don't think so. But are we getting to that point? Yeah, because when I started working here, we had four pump stations. Now we have eight pump stations. Now we have a new plant. Now we have DEP to consider, taking in haul sludge. Our haul sludge business has exploded and still explodes. Last, the year before last, we did a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in revenue in haul sludge. Last year, we did two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in revenue in haul sludge. This year, we're already at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in haul sludge.
That's working.
Okay, so, so yeah, do I anticipate needing another person soon? Yeah, I do. But we're also in a situation where we can no longer ignore our collection system. We can no longer say to ourselves, we can't do this because of money, or because we have to make it a priority, and we have to have the equipment to do it. And DEP now is involved in certain aspects of it, and, you know, we spent a ton of money on the new wastewater treatment plant, and it's excellent. And after we spent that money, I did not ask for a capital improvement project for at least the next five or six years after that, because I knew the city just spent twenty-four million dollars on me, and I wasn't going to ask for anything else. We had everything we needed. But I've always said, in every goal statement, every report I've ever done, that we need to start looking at the integrity of our collection system. And now is the time we need to start doing that. I've asked for stuff before multiple times.
There's no doubt. So I'm just trying to work it out, because it is realistic that if you are doing it, you are going to need help, and there's got to be a way of doing it. Out of curiosity, in any time other than your snowstorm auction, has there been a huge delay working with the highway department, or that normally has been pretty accommodating?
Well, when the, I mean, there always is a wait, because if it's after hours, we get called out, we identify the problem, then we got to call, then we got to talk to Bernie or whoever, and they got to find out who's on call, and Paul, or Adam, or Justin, or whoever. You know, they've got to come, they've got to go to the place, get their equipment, bring their equipment. So there's always a delay of some sort there that happens, but not as long as what happened on Main Street.
Okay, but generally, it is, it's just a process issue, because there's X amount of people, and you're suffering through the same thing. You get the call, and you look, and then somebody looks, somebody gets the equipment, brings it there.
Yep.
Anyone else in the area actually have one of these manhole cutters that you've ever seen?
No.
Bangor?
They had a demo of one at a show, a wastewater show.
Yeah.
That they, that had one. And I'm not, I can't definitively say, no, I don't, nobody has, I don't know of. And I'm not, I can't definitively say, "No, I don't, nobody has," I don't know of anybody that has one. There may be some around. I do know that when I was investigating it and looking at the different vendors and speaking to some of them, there are some communities south of us, not necessarily in Maine, that will only use this to do their manholes. They will not go with the excavator and saw cut method anymore, so.
No, it's, if you do YouTube and watch, it's a neat little tool.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty impressive.
Yeah. And by the looks of the video, it appears that after it's in sight from start to finish, you should be able to finish the whole thing in about fifteen minutes.
It's pretty quick. I don't know if it'll be that quick.
You can match a guy on YouTube, yeah.
It's pretty quick.
A cement truck shows up, and he's getting it down, things done.
Video was three minutes and fifty seconds. I watched it today.
Yeah. And so, I mean, I just, when I, because I like to try to be efficient, and I also like to try and be self-sufficient, because I know other departments have priorities, too. And that snowstorm just brought it to the front. I mean, these guys are out all day, you know, when it's snowing, and they're plowing, and they're doing all that stuff, and to try and haul somebody off of that is problematic because that means some road is not going to get taken care of, and somebody's going to be driving on a slip road. So, that just kind of brought it to the forefront for me. And so, that's when I was like, "We need to do something that we can be efficient and get this work done and be self-sufficient in trying to do it." And the vac truck is different. The vac truck, I think we can be self-sufficient with that as well. I know we're not on that topic.
That's for a later discussion, so.
Yeah.
That was just part of about my thought process.
Yeah.
Because it's two different things at this time.
Yeah.
Now, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, question on the bid, the radio item.
On which bid? The Bobcat or the?
The Bobcat.
Okay.
Five ninety-eight. Is that just an AM/FM radio?
That's all we have in ours now, is just, it's built into the control thing up there on the right-hand side. I don't really care about it. I should have probably looked.
Six hundred dollars, I don't care about it either.
Yeah, I don't, and that's what I was saying, I don't think it's just the radio, I think it's the whole control module. But if we have to pull it, we'll pull it. We don't need that.
I didn't know if it was a two-way radio.
No.
It's not a two-way radio.
No.
It's not a two-way radio.
They sell the headphones.
Yeah, we don't need a radio. You can't even hear it anyway. When you're in the machine, like you guys know, when you're operating a machine, you can't hear a radio unless you're going to put headphones in, which you're not going to do. So, I don't care if we take the radio off. We can take it off. I'll talk to the guy and see if it's, if that's a standalone radio, we'll exit.
Okay. Thank you.
You better ask him to throw it in.
He probably will.
Yeah. Seriously.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I know how that game works.
Any other comments or questions on this? Is there a motion?
Ms. Chairman, moved to approve the request of the wastewater superintendent to purchase the Mr. Manhole Bobcat attachment for eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-five cents with the remaining funds from the wastewater treatment plant construction project, SRF program monies, and to upgrade to a larger Bobcat for thirty-nine thousand, seven thirty-seven decimal eighty-nine to be funded from the capital improvement account.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All in favor except for Counselor Phillips? I'll blame that on jet lag.
Yes.
Counsel order number one zero one nine zero six, request the finance director for approval to encumber certain appropriation accounts.
Good evening, Jennifer Merchant, Finance Director. This first one is an annual request to encumber funds from any unfinished projects. As you can see from the attached list, most of the projects are capital improvement projects.
Any questions, councilors? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, moved to approve the request of the finance director to encumber certain appropriations accounts as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item eighteen, counsel order number one zero one nine zero seven, request the finance director for approval to adjust the FY two thousand nineteen estimated appropriations and revenues.
This request is to adjust the estimated appropriations and revenues for FY nineteen. You can also see from this list, we did not have to take any money from the fund balance this year.
I like that last part of that statement. Comments or discussion?
Moved to approve the request of the finance director to adjust the FY two thousand nineteen estimated appropriations and revenues as presented, Ms. Chairman.
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, public hearing in action on counsel order number one zero one nine zero eight, authorizing the issuance of up to three million, sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars of the city's general obligation bonds to finance the acquisition of miscellaneous vehicles and equipment and other municipal infrastructure improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Ms. Mo.
Good evening. So, the city is seeking authorization to borrow three point five million dollars for various equipment and projects. All these projects and equipments have been reviewed by the Capital Improvement Committee as well as reviewed through the budget process. I also wanted to add that this is just the authorization to borrow. This is, each department head will be coming back to the council for approval for their project or their piece of equipment. So, I'm just going to go through the projects. We have rescue truck number five. This project is estimated at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Give me a second here. So, this is a replacement for rescue number five, which is built in April of two thousand and one. It's seeing a lot of wear and tear, and they're seeing an increase in the mechanical issues. The second project are two plow trucks totaling three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Next project is a vac sweeper for two hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. This is to replace the current sweeper that I know we had a lot of issues with. It was a two thousand and six, and it was worn out, and it was nearly impossible to climb any hills. And this is something that has been discussed previously as well.
And we have approved this purchase already?
Yep.
With future borrowing?
That's correct.
Okay.
And also, I want to go back on the two plow trucks. One is to replace the two thousand plow truck, and the other one is for a two thousand and nine plow truck. We have the loader pusher with wings. This is to help clean up in the downtown areas. These wings can be adjusted to get into some of the tighter areas in the town. We have a radio communications infrastructure project that is estimated at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This is to update our current communications for the police and the fire. There are currently buildings within the city, including the schools and the hospital, that you're unable to communicate on the radios. So, this would upgrade them in order to be able to communicate in those locations. And there's other areas, I think, the Bucksport Road, Main Street, downtown area. Yeah.
If I may.
Oh.
One of the reasons for this requirement or necessary is a few years ago, we were narrow-banded.
Correct.
Which caused a lot of the problems that we're seeing now, and that was a federal requirement.
Mm-hmm.
So, we've been babying it and babying it. And it's time to take care of our law enforcement and fire department. Communications is utmost importance.
And that federal edict came with no funding.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Unfunded mandate.
The next project is Alexis Way. This is the project that was approved by the council last month. This, the residents, that they had petitioned the council to make their road a city street. It was an additional twenty-five thousand dollars, and I had mentioned last month that I'd be coming back to borrow the additional twenty-five thousand dollars. This will be paid back by the residents through a supplemental tax bill. So, that was for the city. For the wastewater projects, we have the Water Street Pump Station. This project is estimated at one point three million dollars. This upgrades the Water Street wastewater pump station that handles two-thirds of the flow in the city. The pump station's at capacity and experiencing seasonal overflows into the river due to the increasing development pressure. This work will increase the capacity and eliminate overflows. We did receive a half a million dollar grant for this project. It's early in the process, so we don't have exact figures, but we're estimating it to be about one point three million dollars for the entire project.
This mandated by DEP consent, yeah?
Uh, no.
Not consent, but?
Yes.
We have received, yes, strong, strong.
No, we've, we've, yes.
Mm-hmm.
We're being directed to do it.
The next wastewater project is a vac truck, and that is to help with, to maintain the sewer lines and the distribution in the city. I also wanted to add, too, that the department heads are here if you have any specific questions on the projects. So, then we have one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in capitalized interest in the cost of issuance. With all of these projects, one point, nearly six million would be paid through taxation, and one point five million would be paid for through user fees. If this is approved, I'll be going out to, for an RFP on a ban, which will be borrowed on an as-needed basis. We decided on a two-year ban just because we have a bunch of retired debt that will be done in two years, so it'll be less effect on the taxpayer if we do a two-year ban. I also wanted to add that this request came in two agenda items because one is for water, and they have requirements with the PUC, so we had to separate out, but we'll borrow as one package. I think I covered everything. Manager Cole, did you?
That's good.
Did you have anything to add to it?
You just clarified that point about separating out the water money from the PUC.
Okay.
Councilors, any questions or discussion? Counselor Fordy.
I give credit to the Capital Improvement Committee who continued the good work of senior staff over the last decade of trying to place these capital projects in a balanced form to limit the effect on taxation dollars. Most of this stuff was taken out because we understood, in my opinion, that this wasn't a one-budget year purchase. This was equipment that is going to last for five, ten, fifteen years over the pump station, hopefully twenty-five years, and that why not amortize that debt service over a long term instead of kicking the taxpayer now with one point five million dollars, which is one and a half mils? These, most of these projects have to get done, some of them by federal and state mandate. So, I, good work on the Capital Improvement Committee and staff to bring a legitimate bond package forward.
I also wanted to add right now that the rates are still really good for growing money.
Mr. Cole.
Also, discussing it with the deputy city manager, it's been termed out over two years because we expect to pay down some significant debt in two years, and that will ease the debt service payments as well.
Right.
No further discussion. I'll entertain a motion, please.
It's public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Welcome to public hearing on this matter. If there's any comments from the public, now's your time, please.
Dan, could you explain a little more about how the bond is going to work on this? I'm a little unclear about the two-year part of it.
The two-year bond anticipation note is time to complete the various projects in the capital plan.
So, then, they're not paying us that off in two years?
No, it would be termed out into a long-term bond, ten years. And deputy city manager has looked at, they have different useful lives and stuff.
They'd be melded together.
Ah, so it's laid out.
For it.
Right. And it's laid out in the attachment, in the different useful lives and the mixed. So, we can share that with you, certainly.
Some of these things, it appears to me, are legitimate things for bonding, like the pump station. But things like trucks and sweepers, I disagree with bonding for that kind of purchase. I think that those things should be done through taxation. It's not appropriate, it's not appropriate, those are inappropriate purchases for bonding, in my opinion.
Those items would have a major impact on the cash flow in any particular year, like, for example, a fire truck.
Yes, they do.
Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I understand that.
And the useful life, and again, we can share the schedule with you, but at the minimum, I believe, useful life on these items is five years, yeah.
Has that been the, has that been the practice of the city in the past, when they buy vehicles, pieces of equipment to bond for them?
Major fire trucks, we always bond for. If I may, one thing we're trying to do, Steve, is right now, we're in a conundrum. We pass a budget in June, it gets settled in July, we go out to bid, order a plow truck, we get it in the next June or July, we miss it in this budget year. So, one thing that I asked them to do, and it's still in here, is can we just finance two of them this year, buy one now, which we have, a used one, and then the next one goes into next year? So, we try to get ahead of that so your material shows up when you need it, not after the job's done.
I understand that, but then you're going to roll the debt into a long-term bond that won't be paid off in two years.
That's correct.
I guess I'm unfamiliar with that. Maybe it's been done in the past for pieces of equipment, trucks, but I was always under the impression that those pieces pretty much got paid for as you use them.
Not too long ago, I think we did some police cruises from the other, the fire chief is here to lessen the blow at one time, but some of the smaller stuff, it has been done, not frequently, I agree with you, but has been done.
I think, yeah, I mean, I'm sure people are going to pass this, but I think my general statement is that bonding should be kept a major project, capital project, and not vehicles and pieces of equipment. Because I think what it ends up doing, it hides, it hides the impact from the taxpayer of these things, so it allows for higher tax expenditures on other things. The people think, "Well, taxes didn't go up much," but in the long run, they do. Thank you.
Deputy Manager Mo, you wanted to say something?
A lot of these projects are projects that have been put in the budget and kept getting kicked down the road, kicked down the road. And then, we came to a point where we have lots of, we don't have any other choices but to purchase these now, because we were trying to, they were getting cut from the budget in order to try to keep the taxes down. So, now, that's kind of where we're, here we're at as well.
Counsel Hamilton.
So, I just respond in terms of, I see it exactly opposite of what you're saying in terms of, I- in terms of, um, I see this as keeping taxes in check, because we are at a place, these purchases, again, I'll use the roads, um, we didn't have a sweeper this year, and, and how much did we hear in terms of the concerns about the quality of the roads? It takes a toll on the roads. This, these, these pieces of equipment, we don't have plow trucks, plow trucks aren't working. We need to purchase these types of things on a regular cycle to be able to meet the needs of, of a growing city. And by, by doing it in a planful manner, in a way that we are, have debt that's being retired, and as that debt retires, to be able to absorb this new debt keeps us at an even, even keel. If we try to do this in a year, in two years, it is absolutely going to raise taxes. This is a way for us to keep taxes at a level, at a level place, and it allows for a discussion for each item about the need as it's presented at that time. So I, I just see it as a, a different way of, of getting to a place where we address needs. Otherwise, we will be absolutely in a place where we, if we don't have a plow truck, we're going to do one of two things. Plow truck breaks, we're either going to go out and have to lease one at a very high cost, or we're going to have to buy one last minute at a very high cost, and that's going to raise taxes. So I think that the approach in terms of trying to do these things more planfully and address them long-term makes a lot more sense than trying to do it year to year, and, because we'll end up in the same place year after year and not really make any progress.
And I'd also point out that, uh, it's not uncommon for municipalities to lease to purchase equipment of this type for a five, six, seven-year basis. I think in terms of, it's much more favorable to do it through borrowing than a lease arrangement, and particularly when you have, as Counselor Hamilton said, an orderly plan, uh, and you roll it all out at once, your cost of money comes down because you spread those, those closing costs. So, uh, I don't think it's unusual for municipalities to term out a five to seven-year purchase.
I also wanted to add, there isn't anything from stopping us from, um, taking some of these items and doing permanent financing prior to the two years if we were interested in doing that. Just, there's that option as well.
Any other comments from the public? I'll close the public hearing. Counselors, any other comments or discussion?
Just one thing.
Yes, sir.
Anything on this list going to be torpedoed by the next meeting when it comes back for approval?
Absolutely.
So, this isn't final.
Is there a motion?
I'd do it.
Three.
Come. You got it? You want me to look? Move to authorize the issuance of up to $3,068,992 of the city's general obligation bonds to finance miscellaneous vehicles and equipment and other municipal infrastructure improvements, and to also authorize Council Order 101908 per the attached written order.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor? Item 20, public hearing in action on Council Order Number 10101909, authorizing issuance of up to $460,000 of the city's general obligation bonds to finance Branch Lake Dam improvements and upgrades and the acquisition of meter reading equipment.
So this is the second agenda item that I spoke of earlier. There's two projects, the Branch Lake Dam, the dam is deteriorating, um, it has some holes allowing water to pass through, and the greats don't, the gates do not function properly, and the safety systems are inadequate. That project is $175,000. The other project is a radio meter reading program. This would, uh, it allowed the crew to do a drive-by collecting meter readings. It's a more efficient system, as our system right now is completely antiquated and inefficient. That project is estimated at $250,000, and then there are some additional funds for the, um, the capitalized interest in bond issuance costs. This too will require a public hearing.
This opens a public hearing on this matter. If there's any one that would like to speak on it, now's your opportunity. Seeing no one, public hearing is closed. Counselor Fordia.
Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest that if you haven't heard the uproar of Graham Lake Dam owners, Graham Lake property owners, uh, when the water in Graham Lake goes down, you let that dam go out, um, you'll be able to hear yourself with the Branch Pond property owners yelling and screaming for that entire lake. So, we knew this was coming, um, I anticipated when I was chair, um, with a review of that dam and, uh, sit-down, um, tabletop exec, um, practice, um, and we knew this was coming. It's just beyond its life, useful life.
Counselor Hamilton.
Just, can you remind me, the, um, for the meter reading, is this, is this just the, a portion of that, or is that the full cost? It's, it's going to get rolled out over, it is the full cost, but it's going to get rolled out over, I think, a couple of years. Five, over five, five years.
Further questions, comments, or thoughts? Is there a motion? Mr. Chairman, move to authorize the issuance of up to $460,000 of the city's general obligation bonds to finance Branch Lake Dam improvements and upgrades and the acquisition of meter reading equipment, and also to authorize Council Orders 101909 per the attached written order. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Council Order, uh, item 21, Council Order Number 101910, request the Public Works Director to award a bid for a loader. So move this chairman.
Good evening, councilors. I'm here tonight to request, um, to award a bid for a wheel loader. On Thursday, October 3rd, we had a bid opening for a 2018 or newer wheel loader and hydraulic pusher for the city's Public Works Highway Division. Four out of the five dealers we contacted responded with bids. You should have the attached bid outcomes. We are requesting to purchase the loader from Chadwick-Bay Ross for a Volvo L90H with the, um, the specified hydraulic pusher. The Volvo was the only model that completely met the bid specifications. The next closest, um, to meeting the specifications was the Case 721G, which had a cost significantly higher than the Volvo. The lowest bid was actually by Norchex, but that machine, um, did not have the required bucket size and a significantly lower breakout force and dump clearance, so we would like to, um, not accept that one. We also attached a key list of some of the items by each loader that did and didn't meet the specifications. So any questions?
Counselor Hamilton.
Could you just summarize in terms of the need? I mean, I know, I'm certainly aware of the reason for this request, but just for the public to understand what, what it's used for and...
Yep. So, um, previous to me being here, um, the Highway Division always had two loaders in the wintertime. One loader comes downtown and, um, correct me if I go astray, guys. Um, one loader comes downtown and plows the parking lots in downtown area, and one motor stays at the pit to load the sand and salt sand. So, our, right before I got here, our oldest loader, Case loader, um, we decided not to spend money on it. So, for the last two winters, we have rented a loader, um, to supplement our loader that we already, the one that we still have that's working, that is now, um, to the point where we've spent a lot of money on keeping it going. It's more of a backup loader than a first priority loader at this point. So this comes about because in attempts to rent loaders, um, I started looking back in August, um, after your budget was approved, and to get the size loader that we need, um, they were already, all the rental companies had already rented them out to a lot of contractors in the state of Maine and other people that use them year to year to year. So it's like you almost have to get in the queue to get the loader of the size that we would need. So, um, we had a conversation about, um, you know, purchasing a new loader to, was part of the capital improvement request, and then, so this new loader would be our number one loader to come downtown, and then our John Deere current loader, um, would be the, the pit loader. We would keep that one.
The pit loader, what would be, become the pit loader that's capable of loading all of the trucks, uh, as far as the height, the bucket size?
Yep. Yep. And that's one of the key things is, um, one of the reasons that we didn't want to go with the cheapest John Deere option is, um, when we haul snow from downtown, loading the trucks with snow, there's height clearance issues, and the, um, the lowest bid was on the lower side of height clearance, and just makes it more difficult to load trucks.
Lisa, I see on the, uh, bid, the word Volvo.
Yep.
I know that, uh, we had a, uh, greeter several years ago that was a Volvo, and we found out that Volvo was a Swedish word at the time for nightmare. Is there an extended warranty available on this? And if so, what would it be and what would be your recommendation?
So I did, I haven't discussed with Bernie since, uh, he wasn't here, but the, I did get the information on extended warranty. Um, it's about nine, now I can't put my fingers on it, about $9,000, just under $9,000, um, to get a five-year, 5,000-hour warranty. Right now, the way it's bid, we would get a three-year, 5,000-hour warranty. Talking with these guys quickly before the meeting, we don't think it's necessarily the best way to spend almost $9,000.
Because you think you'll have $5,000 in three years? $5,000?
No, I don't think we will. I don't think we'll go over the hours. It's just a question of, are we going to have $9,000 worth of issues in the first five years?
Yeah. It's crap. And the standard warranty is three years, $5,000.
Three years, 5,000 hours.
So the $9,000 buys you two-year warranty.
Two, additional two years, yes.
And no, and no more hours?
And no hour extension only, you get additional two years of 4,500 a year. And the loaders are of a different animal than the greeter, the greeter was a headache and, uh, I remember I was told they don't even produce them anymore.
Correct.
Any further questions?
So the extended warranty is not part of this?
The three-year, 5,000 is part of it. Yep.
And, and the extended, I'm quite sure, most of those companies can be added at a later date, probably within the first year, first six months, if the thought process did change. Not critical at time of purchase.
And we, we would get an inkling anyway, in that time, if, if there was an issue with it.
Yeah, one winter.
Yeah. No, no. You'll know right off the bat. Is there a motion?
I would ask that the Finance Director, Deputy City Manager, um, from Future Financing, was that included in the previous issue for the ban, or do you still want it from Future Financing?
No, I think, we, we certainly saw it in that finance, so yeah, okay.
Future, okay. Okay. I know bonding, they're rather fussy on that.
The one thing I would like to know, and I think it's part of the, um, approval, is, um, that the hydraulic pusher is included with that, with the loader request.
Is it with it?
It's a separate purchase, but a package deal. I mean, it'd be one purchase, so it is part of the bond package.
It is part of the bonds, was part of the bond package, and it is all included for the same piece of equipment. I don't think it's a real big issue anyway, but.
Just wanted to be clear.
Been authorized to buy it, and it is listed separately in the bond package and listed separately in this. So you'll get both pieces of equipment, and the Finance Director can worry about how she words it.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to award the purchase of a 2019 Volvo L90H wheel loader with bucket, forks, and hydraulic pusher to Chadwick-Bay Ross with funding to come from Future Financing and allow City Manager to sign all necessary paper documents.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 22, Council Order Number 101911, request of the Public Works Director to purchase a used 2018 Western Star single-axle plow truck from Daigle and Houghton, from Daigle and Houghton, and authorize the City Manager to sign all necessary agreements.
Lisa Cyclage, Public Works Director. So, I'm requesting to purchase a used 2018 Western Star truck in plow gear from Daigle and Houghton. Daigle and Houghton knew we were looking at the possibility of multiple trucks, um, in the coming year, and they had one, a used truck come in from a town in Vermont. It's a 2018 Western Star, um, that has approximately 6,000 miles on it. Um, it was built in late 2017, but it is a 2018 model. The purchase price for the truck, um, includes an extended warranty and it, and a trade-in of our 2004 International Truck plow gear, and that comes to a total of $144,507. Um, this truck was originally priced or purchased at approximately $188,000, um, just under two years ago when the town in Vermont purchased it. It comes with a heavier front end and rear end, a larger rotor and transition, transmission, as well as many other options that would not normally be available at this price point. Um, with a savings of approximately $44,000 from the original price, as well as a savings of about $23,000 from the truck that we purchased last year comparison, um, we believe this would be a good investment for the city.
And it's available now?
It's available.
It's, I could pick it up tomorrow.
Yeah. And the truck was brought down, the crew did have a chance to go over it and try it and, uh, observe, so it has been looked at and is viable.
Yep. Um, the one thing that we do, um, I do want to note is two things. One, it does not have calcium tanks, we'll have to add those fairly cheap, a couple thousand dollars or less to add calcium tanks, um, and it comes with a one-way plow. We, uh, will, the idea is to, we'll trade in the one-way plow towards a reversible plow, um, but that would be under the, um, amount that the manager would be able to approve.
But, uh, the truck is much heavier duty than what we normally get. Should be a good experiment, and a, it's, uh, rather than spending new, I think we're going to get a much more rugged truck than we've been bidding in the past, and then repairing. And then repairing.
Counselor Phillips, I have a question, please, on the, uh, the heavy duty. You're my, uh, go-to truck guy.
Thank you.
He's a boat, he's a boat man.
I believe the number, it was a two-thousand-pound heavier front end?
Yeah, I think it's got a twenty-thousand-pound front.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, it's got a twenty-thousand-pound rather than an eighteen.
And the rear end is thirty versus twenty-three.
On the front end, does it make that much of a difference on a truck this size?
You throw a plow in front of one, yes it does. I think the standard ones, they were on the sixteens. Then we've been doing eighteens and this one's a twenty. And that time you put a plow on it, then also add a wing, if you see them going down the road, they get a little bit of a smile to them. So twenty-thousand-pound front end does help. Some of the other trucks, they'll put an extra airbag on the ditch side to help bring it up. Still doesn't do it. And if you ask the crew that oftentimes they're down, taking the springs out through there and they'll do that trick, they'll actually put a heavier spring on the ditch side than they do on the other side to compensate for the wing. So starting out with the truck that's built heavy enough, I think you'll see quite a difference. Should be in the-
Now do you all know why I go to him for my truck info?
And if nothing else, it's a, it's a cost-effective experiment to see whether the maintenance on this one and downtime will be less than on the standard one that we buy, whether it's worth it in the future.
The, uh, the springs alone replaced, I think is probably in the range of six to eight hundred dollars a piece now. So, time they do that and fixtures, you've spent fifteen hundred dollars on the front end every couple of years, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other, uh, questions of either Lisa or Counselor Phillips? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the, uh, purchase agreement with Daigle and Houghton for a used 2018 Western Star single axle plow truck and plow gear for a hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and seven dollars, including a trade-in of our 2004 International Plow Truck and Gear. This request to be paid by future financing allow the, and allow the city manager to sign all necessary documentation.
Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. You have your truck. Item twenty-three, council order number one zero one nine one two, request of the public works director to sell the old sweeper and nineteen ninety-six International Plow Truck through the govdeals.com website.
Good evening, counselors. Um, Lisa Cyclage, public works director still. Um, so I am requesting to, your approval to sell the two items mentioned. I believe it's actually ninety-eight though, right? Not ninety-six, yes. Nineteen ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-eight International Single Axle Plow Truck and a two thousand and five sweeper. Um, all items will be set up with a reserve price on govdeals.com to make sure we are guaranteed at least the amount that we would get to trade this item in. Um, per the govdeals procedures, the successful bidder will pay for the equipment via wire transfer to govdeals and make arrangements to pick up the equipment from our garage. Um, we will run advertisements in the local newspaper as well as online so that locals know these are available for sale. Um, once the equipment has been picked up, the city will get a check from govdeals for the amount minus, um-
Correction.
The seller pays the, the fee essentially. Um, if the reserve amount is not met for any reason, the equipment will remain our property.
You used this before, correct?
Correct.
The last time, that worked out pretty well.
It did.
The only thing I had requests is on the truck or that sweeper, if the truck has a plow that's going with it or any other gear that's going with it, it be put together with the truck at the time it's advertised. We ran into this once before and there was some equipment that wasn't with it and there were some questions when it did go.
Yep, it, um-
So everything that's gonna go, put it together at the time it's in bid, so it's not asked later, please.
Yep, we can do that in, uh, the, the, the website require, or not doesn't require, but pictures are the best way to sell it, so it'll have pictures of all the different pieces and parts.
You just got seven thousand dollars for a truck six years newest, so this one must be a peach for the rust.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the public works director to sell the above noted equipment via government deals and accept the bid amounts once sold if over the reserve amount.
Second. Motion in a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item twenty-four, public hearing in action on proposed amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter Three, Harbor Ordinance.
Good evening. Chad Brackett, interim harbor master. We're, the, uh, Harbor Commission and I are requesting for an ordinance change. There's been a lot, a few people that have requested extending their voting season and some people that have requested storing their boat in the harbor during the winter. That currently is not allowed as there's a October twenty-second removal date. And we have drafted a ordinance change, sent it to the lawyer, and we're now looking for you guys to make that amendment.
I got a, just a quick question.
Yes.
Um, you mentioned that, uh, some of, some people wanted to store their boat in the harbor.
Yes.
Are you referring only in the water or on dry land?
That would only be in the water tied to a slip.
Okay.
So with the ice eaters and the boat sitting there, uh, wonder how that changes the dynamics of the whole thing, staying in a slip?
Well-
The ice and the movement.
That is, that is a concern. We know that the ice eaters worked very well last year. This year, it's basically gonna be a trial basis. We've got, uh, one person, possibly two people that are looking to do a partial season, basically staying until December, coming back in probably late March, early April. And we have one boat that's interested in staying in all winter. So this year's gonna be kind of a trial basis to see how things work and, and make sure that we are gonna be okay on that.
How big is the boat that wants to stay all winter? A fishing boat, something with some size and substance?
No, it's probably, it's a, about a thirty-foot sailboat.
So, what if? You say yes, they're in there and all of a sudden, uh, you decide this isn't gonna work. Are you reserving the right to ask for immediate removal?
Yes.
So the money we've spent on that, I would, uh, bit leery on sticking anything in there with the movement of the ice and the water as the winter progresses and doing more damage to the, uh, infrastructure. This is, I think we can remember in the short past, it's a pretty expensive place to repair.
We've also put in the application and the, the amendment to the rules that any damages the city will not be held liable for.
I'd say you'd have a pretty darn good challenge getting them to foot the fifty or hundred thousand dollar bill to have Brock Marine come up and reset two or three of those things. I'd say that's got a, probably it's a pretty toothless clause.
Uh, quick question. Um, before you actually go ahead and allow people in, uh, is there a possibility you could, uh, research some places that have these, um, what do you call them?
The ice eaters?
Yeah, the ice eaters. Uh, with boats being moored nearby, maybe, maybe somebody's had some experience doing what we're talking about doing. If that's possible, we might get a better idea.
Curiosity in a rivers, in a, Buck Sports in the river, do they allow anything in, in over there over the winter? Do you know? I'm just asking.
Uh, I don't believe that they do. I know northeast is, which is, I understand it's not a river, but they, they are open year-round.
It's the problem of the flow and the ice. There's movement there, much more movement there than in a bay or a cove.
Counselor Hamilton?
Um, so I do have a question about, um, uh, letter D. Uh, it says the harbor master will not have regular duty hours during the winter season, but will be on call as needed. Uh, that seems very broad in terms of, um, what the, what the on-call times are, um, knowing that we don't staff the harbor during the winter season. Um, so that's wide open to, that could be anytime. So what, what is intended by that statement? What would be the on-call, a reason for somebody being called in? And how is that factored into the whole budgeting in terms of, um, the crew's busy during the winter? So you're already dealing with, with lots of overtime. How does that work, um, in this setting?
During our normal workday, between six, three-thirty, Monday through Friday, we have to be down to the harbor periodically to check on the ice eaters anyway. Um, so, you know, during that period of time, if anything arises, we will be around. And then if there was an emergency situation outside of that, then we obviously would have to do something.
Can you define periodically?
Depending on what the weather conditions are. I know Adam in the past used to keep an eye on what the temperature was doing and get down at least once a week and check on the ice eaters. And if it was gonna be cold, a cold period coming up, he would turn them on and then once things warmed back up, he'd turn them back off again. So I would say that we would, we, cause, because last year we had some issues with rope and, and other debris getting tangled up in them, so they need to be checked on at least once a week while they are running, if not more than that, just to make sure that there's not any issues with them.
Big problems coming.
We have also- And we have cameras down there, so we can keep an eye on, on things. And we also are requiring that the vessel owner check on the vessel once a week and report to the harbor master with any issues.
Counselor Fordy.
I don't have a problem doing this on a trial basis this winter. I, I was impressed with the ice eaters last year, but then again, we didn't have a extended stint of twenty below zero with wind blowing. My issue would be, uh, if you've got a vessel moored, not moored, slipped there, um, is there enough electricity to keep bilge punch, bilge pump going and the ice eaters? And the second thing is, um, I have an issue with putting a city highway employee in a shovel to keep the docks clear, um, when they're slippery and the wind's blowing and, um, I would rather have, if you want a moor there, you take care of getting in and out. And under F on the, the section ten reg, general regulations, in the event docks are slippers, we ought to, ought to put a Y in there so it's slippery. Uh, [laughing]. Not better, just a fresh set of eyes. You guys have lived this for a few months. Article four, general regulations. F.
Counselor Hamilton?
So I, conceptually, I'm not opposed to it, but I do think there are a number of points have been made and concern, and I know this had legal review, but I still have some questions about how this actually plays out and if we are actually protecting ourselves as a city with this. Because, again, I'll just reference what I just read in terms of D, to a, uh, owner of the boat, that means something different than what you just said. So if I'm a boat owner, I might think, oh, well, there, the ice eaters aren't working and I'm down there checking my boat, I expect somebody to come down and address that and if it isn't addressed and there's some, something happens, um, I think there's, that presents some liability. So for me, I think that it really needs a more review to make sure that we're covering those kinds of issues and concerns. I also, I think, um, the point about, um, damage and getting some perspective about how it might work in, in other settings would be, um, really helpful information before we take a step at that we find that we are now back on the hook for eighty to a hundred thousand dollars to, to repair. So I think it's conceptually a great idea. I, I'm not sure that we've, as a city, had really thought it through enough to, to act on it. That's, that's just my concern.
Counselor Phillips?
The public gain for the risk, I have some hesitation with, especially you talk about the slippery part and the middle of the winter, if you think about that ramp at low water and a little bit of ice on that, who slides in and who's responsible for that after they skid down the edge and end up in the water? Whether it be an employee or the owner of the boat. Yeah. Uh, that could be a fun ride in a hurry.
Counselor Fordy.
I, I would ask staff if we've run this through, uh, liability partners, M and A, to see what our exposure is and whether it's even worth it. I'm just wondering if it's time to, um, postpone action on this for a couple of weeks and get some answers. This is the first time we've seen it, is this weekend, when the packets came out.
And one thing I'd like to know, if a boat owner had their vessel down there and it had to be removed in the dead of January or February, is that possible? Is there a company around that would say, yeah, I'll go down and take it out for you?
Yeah, you'll get them, you'll get them out, yeah.
The visas.
And I don't wanna go with them and you probably-
And may not go back in.
They will give it out, yeah. It's possible.
Yeah, I, I agree with Counselor Fordy with your last comment.
It's, it's-
I, I think if, do you think we can get the answers we're after in two weeks?
What's that?
You, you have, you have a special meeting the Friday after election. It's already called, um, which I think we have time to add an agenda item to, cause it wouldn't be a public hearing, it would be just a straight article. Right? We have, you have, you folks have a meeting, um, that Friday morning to approve the-
On the eighth.
If we have the public hearing now, then you can postpone action there without having another public hearing. Because the people that have been publicly notified are, already have the chance to be here and speak.
So can I just ask a question of, in terms of, just in this record, just in terms of whether or not that works? In terms of the, you said there's at least one owner that's interested in this, um, do we need, do, do they need action on this prior to that November timeframe?
If he was gonna keep his boat in here, in, in the Ellsworth Harbor this year, yes.
Or, or as part of motion, you could extend-
Temporary extension.
The, the interim harbor master extending the season until this is adjudicated.
No, I agree with that.
I'm trying to make it difficult for you guys after I leave.
No, and I appreciate that. Um, no, I, I'm just thinking that whether or not this boat owner would want a definitive answer. That's, I, we could extend it, but if that person is saying, well, I really need to know before the end of this month, cause I have to make other arrangements, then, then it takes the pressure for us in terms of having to act. So that's, that's why I didn't know if you had that answer or not.
And I would assume that the command to move probably comes from the harbor master, so if it's not enforced, it probably is, at his discretion, I think is often used. Uh, yeah, bunch of good questions and it's not that we're not, I think, we're open to it, but having a good, healthy debate, you come up with ideas and things that, that add to the thought process.
In the past, we have opened the public hearing, taken public comment, closed the public hearing, tabled it, and at the next meeting, we have taken it off the table, reopened the public hearing for additional comments and gone on and been fine, legal-wise and policy-wise.
I like your way of thinking. Public hearing on this matter is open. Anyone with any comments? If you'd please come up to the podium, state your name and tell us what you think, please.
Michelle Kaplan, Ellsworth. Um, typically pleasure boats, the insurance only runs till October thirty-first. So if this boat owner doesn't have insurance that's gonna go past October thirty-first- So if this boat owner doesn't have insurance that's gonna go past October 31st, it will open the city up to liability. If that boat damages another boat, or if it damages the city property, how could the boat owner pay for that? If you have boat insurance and your pleasure boat damages a dock, for example, at a marina, a lot of times, the boat insurance will cover not only the damage to your boat, but the damage to the marina. And from what I know, most boats in the northeast don't go past October 31st. So this boat owner would probably have to have insurance for that.
And by our regulations, they're required to and show proof of, in order to be there. Yep, you're right.
Thank you.
Good point.
Thank you.
Steven Shay, I didn't plan to speak on this one tonight, but I gotta say, what's in this for the city? Why does the boat owner wanna keep his boat in the water for his own purposes, I assume? So he doesn't have to pay for the hauling? He's not gonna use the sailboat, 30-foot sailboat, all winter? Is he gonna live on the boat? It just, the simple question is, what's in this for the City of Ellsworth? You're assuming all these risks and all these potential problems. And what's in it for you? And I would say it's a pretty, pretty easy answer. Zero.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, please? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counselors, is there a motion? Is there further discussion?
I would reiterate that I couldn't support it unless I had some idea as to the experience of other places that may share ice eaters with boats over the winter.
Counselor Hamilton?
And I would just say that, I'm in the same place. I'm happy to defer to extending this. I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done in the next few weeks if we do that. That would have to come out of it for me to change my position. I'm willing to give that time for that information to come forward, but I think it's gonna be a tall task to really present what I think we need to have in place. But I will defer if we want to extend it. But that's where I stand in terms of the bar to convince me that there isn't a lot of risk. That's pretty high right now.
I think Mr. Shay raised an interesting point as well. And I think the implication is that if something goes seriously wrong, anything that the city expects to get out of this could disappear very quickly if we had to repair something.
I think there's too many questions of liability, too many questions of safety, too many questions of very expensive damage that would come back on us, i.e. the taxpayer, that would have to pay for it. And unless I can be shown where other areas do this successfully and have all the bases covered, then I couldn't support it as it is right now.
Two of the things, if you want us to extend the birthing dates. So through December, there really is no ice issue.
That's correct.
That comes as of later. And you said you have a couple that want to stay through December for some reason, to use the boats or for ease? Do you know the reasoning?
There is one seafarm that works out of Ellsworth Harbor that is probably going to be done roughly in December, and then will likely start up again in April. So he would like to extend it. And then I've also been told by several people that, given the opportunity, they would like to extend their boating season on each end if they could, for pleasure purposes.
Them staying in the harbor, I don't see any harm in that long as they're out prior to ice. And I think the ice and the water flow is the issue. Do you and Adam work that? Do you see an issue with somebody staying in that harbor prior to ice?
Not before, before or after ice out, no.
And is there an issue of enforcing anything other than charging them for the use of the swept through that period of time? Would that be acceptable to a certain extent?
I don't believe that we're gonna see any issues with people not doing as we ask. The people that I have in mind currently at this point are all outstanding people that...
But those that are using it are known quantities?
Yes.
That's another option. Extending the dates. And still requiring the boats to be out of there by the time we have issues with ice.
And allowing them in when we have a clear vision of when ice is out, gone forever. That's something to bring back to you in two weeks as an alternative.
I like Gary's idea of revisiting this in two weeks. Hopefully with some information.
So there's been a bunch of chatter. You can review the records. And then go forth, you and your cohorts.
Is there a motion? Move to table. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Did I hear, did who seconded?
There was a motion to table.
Who seconded? You have to have a second.
I'm sorry.
And was there a time specific, two weeks, or just...
And that was gonna be my question, Mr. Chairman. Did your motion include putting it on the agenda for the Friday after election day?
I was just trying to irritate you, to be quickly honest.
Good job. Because I believe if we don't do date certain, it goes on the next regular agenda item, next agenda.
I'm still back on the, missing the second.
You want to revisit this one?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to revisit this?
I didn't...
This motion?
I didn't hear your question.
Would you like to revisit the motion? Do you need some clarification?
I'd like, how about rereading the motion, please? Or restating it, if you would.
Move to table to the next, for two weeks? Is that... Madam Clerk, will that be okay, or does that really throw a monkey works in deer?
Two...
The Friday morning.
Yeah.
Till the next Friday.
You'd want at least three. Yeah, two weeks is before the 8th.
Whenever the next meeting may be. Is the meeting on the 8th?
Yep. A week from Friday, right?
Two weeks.
So, table to the November 8th meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Motion and a second.
Happy here.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
This is the comedy portion of the evening.
Comedy. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, at the same time, I'd moved to table, Council Order 101913, request of the Harbor Commission to amend the harbor fee schedule to the same meeting.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 26, executive session to discuss personnel matters in accordance with MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A.
Will we go into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. We're in executive session.